Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And it's March ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, everyone, for coming and everyone here in person and remotely. I will start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, on our nation, and in our God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the, you should all have the agenda and um, I think we want to make a couple of changes to it. We've got at the last minute, the developer out near Holly Lane who's joining us, Donovan Ward, would like to speak to us. Hi Donovan.
Hi, how's it going, everyone?
All right, we gotta run through a couple more things, then we'll get to you, Donovan.
Jim just joined.
You did? Okay, hi Jim.
Where is he?
It's connecting, okay.
So does that, is that an addition to the agenda?
And, and also, I forgot that this meeting is right after town meeting day and I don't know if we want to vote for our officers tonight. And add that to the agenda. So it's on the floor for a motion.
So, under what, new business?
Well, probably, yeah.
Approval of agenda, we can move to amend the agenda there.
Uh, right, that should be the first order of business, but we're also going to add um, a discussion, is that under new business or old business for?
I would say that would be number one under new business, Donovan.
And that's under new business?
Yeah.
I moved to amend the agenda by adding under new business remarks of Donovan. What's your, what's your last name, Sir McCain?
Ward.
No. And what was the other item?
Uh, to vote for the offices of the uh, planning commission.
The elected officers of the planning commission for the upcoming
Okay.
I'll second that.
Your second, okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Adding two items under new business, correct? That's all we're doing.
Yeah, that was the amendment. All, all those in favors, please say hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Any opposed? Okay, great. Welcome, Jim.
Well, good evening.
Yeah, good to have you back.
Well, it's good to be back, I'll tell ya.
We've got a full house tonight, Jim, so you and Norm are alternates.
Okay.
Uh, well, Norm is a Norm is replacing Andy, who's got some technical difficulties, but we've got a full house. Uh, so, uh, public comment is the next thing on the agenda, and I don't think we have um, any public. So let's move right down to new business and um, to Donovan, Donovan Ward, who is still um, still working away at that five-house.
That's correct. Yeah, we're plugging away on it. Um, I just talked to, kind of, talked to Bill Sweet this morning and he was like, oh, they're meeting tonight, if you want to try to slip in and just ask him a question. Right now, what we're doing is we're trying to figure out the best course of action to bring power across the Tenny Brook, which the town of Rutland has mapped as a special flood hazard area. Um, and the town has ordinance to cite all utilities underground, and that would mean digging up through the special flood hazard area, digging through the Tenny Brook. Um, and so we're wondering if you guys, because it does say in the regulations that you, the planning commission can waive that requirement, and we're just wondering if there's a precedent in place, if projects have done that before, because we're thinking about running power underground, citing up one, citing two poles, and then coming up, going over the special flood hazard area, and then going back underground. We're just kind of wondering if, how the board would feel about that.
And, and the ordinance reads how, Bill?
It, I've got it right here, if you'd like me to read it to you.
I, 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 I wrote a copy too, Donovan.
Perfect.
It says, um, all electric telephone, cable TV, and outdoor lighting distribution lines shall be placed underground in accordance with utility company specifications. In areas of extremely shallow soils, the planning commission may waive this requirement. The subdivision shall coordinate the design with the utility companies to ensure adequate and suitable areas for underground installation for the proposed subdivision and areas adjacent to the subdivision.
So I guess this could qualify as shallow uh, soils, because there's no soils.
Obviously, it can't be waived because of shallow soil, so it can be waived for that, it seems like this is similar.
Hmm, yeah.
More similar.
Norm?
Does the ordinance, um, bill contain a waiver, waiver power?
It says, it says that the planning commission may waive, may waive this requirement.
Okay. When was the last time we required this in practice? Anyone remember?
I, I don't think that we've ever dealt with this in the time that I've been on.
Remember it either.
No. You've been all along with me, so.
So that alone is, is one reason to waive it, because we haven't really been abiding by the the, the um, regulations, the subdivision regulations, and perhaps we want to take a look at the section and see if we before we finalize everything, six oh five?
Uh, I, I just have the new, I found it in the new ones, I don't have it in the, in the original one, but yeah, it's, it's, it's down there.
Yeah.
Is it the beginning of the line that's going to be where the Brook problem is, or is it further?
No, it's gonna be like, so there's currently, there's a um, a utility box just south of the uh, I guess it would be the second to last driveway, as you head down the hill in Holly Lane, it'd be the, there's a driveway on your right-hand side, and there's a box right there. We would run subsurface for five hundred feet, maybe cite a utility box and run another hundred feet or so, or maybe we would just cite a pole instead of doing a short run underground to a pole. Um, and the run, you know, there is also a wetland around the Tenny Brook, and so this would avoid impact to the wetland, impact to the buffer, and we just kind of thought it was just the course of least impact, and it the town might favor that, but we just, we didn't want to go in planning on that and then have, you know, that not be an option.
How big's the buffer? How big is that?
Oh, it's a, so it's a class-two wetland, and it's a fifty-foot buffer off of the, the wetland boundary, but it's the wetland kind of runs along the river, and it actually extends, at one point extends past the special flood hazard area, so we'd be citing it outside of the wetland buffer on the south side, um, and just outside of the
So what would be the distance between poles?
Um, the maximum that Green Mountain Powers uh, would run is two hundred and fifty feet between poles.
And that would cover all of theirs?
Yeah, we might have to cite, it, we're still trying to figure out the best way, um, and it might be three poles, or it might, we're shooting for two poles.
But that, that two hundred and fifty feet would span all those areas?
Yeah.
All the wet areas?
All the wet areas?
It would span the special flood hazard area, but it might be, it might land just on the edge of the buffer. So we're trying to figure out, maybe it's better to push that a little bit further, you know, and do a short run of underground, and then the two hundred and fifty feet would get us the full distance.
And it's gonna span this Tenny Brook?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, so if my only question is, is, is any of that area gonna be disturbed at all? I mean, if, I understand your, your point of there's transformer uh, box or a pole box there, and then it could go a hundred feet or so before you come up, but this two hundred and fifty-foot span spans every bit of the area that we would need to make sure we're they recover, you know, the wetland and the buffer?
That's the goal, yeah. It would, it would get us, I've, I don't have CAD up in front of me, but it gets us like right on the edge, the two hundred and fifty feet. And so it's, you know, we're, either it's gonna be three poles and we're completely outside of it, or it's gonna be two poles and we're just gonna nick the wetland buffer, but we'd be outside of the special flood hazard area.
I have a question for the planning commission. Um, do you know what the rationale was for putting that in, because um, I just know with wetland work, it is better to have uh, an overhead versus to bury it, especially if you can go in on either side to put the poles in? So I was just wondering if you knew what went into, why that was put in the regulation, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure anyone here does remember why it was written that way.
Hello? And that would be the, the goal, is we've got, there's an existing road, and so we'd be citing, you know, driving down the, the existing disturbance, you know, over the existing road and citing a pole on either side.
Um, how are the permits, the other permits that you need?
Yeah, so we've completed the subdivision plat, and that's been signed and stamped for a little bit now. Um, we are, we've got the wastewater permit is all teed up, the state's reviewed it, and now it's kind of all contingent on stormwater. Um, Nicole Kesslerain has been working through that, um, and stormwater right now, as you guys I'm sure are aware, is absolutely crazy, um, with the, since it dropped down a half an acre of impervious. Um, so we're kind of waiting on the stormwater permit to make sure that, that none of the stormwater infrastructure is gonna have impact to the wetland buffers, and then the wetland permit is kind of waiting on stormwater, and then so it's kind of, once we get the stormwater permit, the wolf, the rest of them will kind of all fall into place. Hoping within a month for stormwater.
Are you looking at this next construction season?
Um, potentially. It depends on whenever we get the permits. I hate to, you know, tell someone something and then have something come up that, you know, we can't predict.
Okay, any other questions for Donovan, or does anyone want to make a motion?
Do we have, do we have all the information that we need?
I, I, I hate to be kind of the the, do we not need to know where these are gonna be set before we, before we agree? I, I just, I think we need to see it before we agree for something that we can't see.
To waive.
And, and know that, that the utility companies have, that it's consistent with their requirements.
Would it be too difficult to get us a visual of what that would look like?
No, it would, it would not, and that, I thought I was just coming in here to ask just the question, um, but I would have sent over some plans. Um, but yeah, no, I could totally get something over to you guys, and I'm not necessarily asking for the requirement to be waived this minute, I'm just curious to see if that's something that you guys.
I think what you've heard, though, is that the uh, the commission is favorable to doing that, but we don't have quite all of the information to be able to go ahead and issue that waiver at this point in time.
Awesome, yeah, we're, no, we're not looking for a waiver right now, just purely getting information.
Okay, so I don't think any motion is needed. Um, we meet again on the thirtieth, Donovan, if you want to join us again then?
Okay, yeah, I could, um, I'll scratch it down and I'll see if, if we can make that work. And then I'll be in contact.
Okay, yeah, be in contact with uh, Bill, and, and when do you think you want a waiver? Final, is, is, is anything else?
That would be a good question. Um, so, you know, maybe the next meeting, if we, if I can make it, and we've got the plans and everything's looking good. Um, we have been talking with Green Mountain Power, and, you know, I let them know that I was gonna be talking to you guys, because they don't, you know, we don't want them to progress with their work without really knowing if this is, you know, even a possibility. Um, and so what we'll do is we'll, we'll get some plans together and we'll really get some concrete details on how many poles, exactly where they're, where they're gonna fall.
Okay, and yeah, we don't mean to rush you, um, we can push this into April and
No, we, we, we'd prefer to keep things moving.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
If he gets a drawing, we would have enough to make a decision, I think so.
Cool.
I had a copy of the permit.
A copy of the permit?
Have we issued a permit already?
No.
No. Okay, so we need
No, we've only done preliminary discussions with Donovan.
Okay.
What, what permit are you talking about? Oh, never mind, okay.
We have not issued a subdivision permit.
No, no.
So he's just generally discussing a waiver in connection with his application for the subdivision.
Right, right.
Because there are lots of moving pieces.
Mary Beth, can you think of anything else we should be asking um, of Donovan or suggesting?
No, I think if they need to have buffer impacts, and he knows they need a wetland permit, um, and that's done by the state, so that's the only yeah. Nothing else.
Okay. All right, Donovan, do you have everything you need from us at this point?
I think so, yeah, I really, really appreciate the time.
Yeah, yeah, well, thanks for the last-minute pop-in here.
I appreciate being able to accommodate. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Good night.
You too, bye-bye.
Pleasant young man. Pleasant young man.
Uh-huh.
He's a pleasant young man.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we've had a couple good conversations. So um, next on the agenda would be, we move the officers, the electing officers there. So the floor is open.
I nominate Barbara Noyes Pulling to be chair for the next two years.
Year.
You want to take that chance?
Is it a year? Isn't it a year?
It's uh, I think every year.
Yeah, we do it every year.
Is it every year?
Yeah.
And you, um, do you want to um, also nominate a, a secretary or vice chair?
Vice Chair Dana Peterson, who has paid me handsomely.
Give me a second.
Jerry, Howard, gives it with a tie.
Assuming both you guys are okay with that.
I guess.
I can live with it.
Any other discussion? Or comments?
I have a forty-five-minute speech prepared and supported by nominations.
Uh, Paul for the vote? Before he's gone?
You better get it.
Well said.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? We've got a slate um, of officers for the planning commission for the next year. Uh, all those in favor of the, the Pulling and Peterson slate?
I hate to think of what that is.
Please say aye.
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 More time to think about it.
Opposed?
Want to table it to the next meeting?
No, I was thinking about the, the, the Pulling Peterson abbreviation. Yeah.
Okay, um, next on our list, it's in old business, but we really haven't done much with this yet, so, but, you know, we, we did touch upon it last time, the short-term rentals. And uh, Bill has done quite a bit of great work
Yeah.
in the last three weeks. We have a pretty polished draft ordinance and the um, registration form for those with S T Rs as they're known in the bills.
This would not cover uh, someone who's operating a traditional bed and breakfast, correct?
No, well, uh, no, that's a different.
That, is that covered by the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, this, so uh, under that permission um, it is defined what a short-term rental would be.
Yep, I have some questions about, about that. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't
This, this come, uh, I can't remember where all my things came from, I think this came from the Woodstock one, um, of the look.
That were the, the, kind of as a whole, or?
What's that?
That, or the
The, the contents of this document are from a variety of sources.
You gave us three or four last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um,
I was just wondering where the purpose was come from, I have a little bit of a discussion about that.
I got, I got a bunch of stuff, but that, that, that seat, there was, and there was a state stat, there was state statute in there too. Um, that were some, where some of the definitions came from, that may have been where, where that came from, but um, I've got a lot.
That, that, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any conflict in what was determining a traditional bed and breakfast, because that wasn't defined, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Uh, and so uh, there were a number, I've got a couple of questions as we go through the document, a, about the, the numbers, and how, how it plays out, and what is short-term, and I, I just, I just, my question that I had at the very beginning was that it, this does not apply to a traditional bed and breakfast, because they are registered as hotels are with the state, the Department of Commerce.
It may not, I, I Yeah, so, so hotels have, are, are separately registered and separately regulated, and they're not, they're not part of this. They specifically are not part of this.
So my, yeah, I, I figured that was the case, so I was reasoning this in my own mind about whether a traditional bed and breakfast is registered similarly to a hotel, or whether that would somehow be covered under this, because that's another target audience that we would need to.
Yeah, it, it also becomes how they advertise, so like if somebody has a bed and breakfast and they advertise on Airbnb, for example, now they're a short-term rental, I mean, they're, they're, that's, they're advertising to that audience, so a lot, some of it can be where they um, how, how they are positioning themselves.
Regardless of whether they're registered with the state.
Yeah.
I would think.
Okay, regardless of whether, okay.
I would think, I mean, I would think that we would, I think Bill's got a great point, if it's advertised as an Airbnb, uh, uh, under one of the uh, short-term rental companies, then certainly they should, you know, I would think abide by the particular rules that we set for, I would think.
I, I, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Because I, I know that I mean, if you're going and you're traveling, you can pull up a hotel, and sometimes they have like AAA, you, they'll pull up bed and breakfasts, which are not necessarily Airbnb listed, although now, more frequently, there are multiple sites that will list both hotels, traditional air, traditional B and Bs, and then the Airbnbs. The traditional B and Bs, they usually are providing you with food and other things.
Could be different than short-term rentals.
A great example is uh, someone who owns a condominium only for that purpose.
For renting it out?
Yeah.
And we, we have some of those.
That would be a short-term rental. As opposed to somebody living in a home, although it gets a little convoluted.
This definition appears in, I think, two or three different municipal ordinances.
Okay.
And it comes, a, a lot of it comes from state statute, because they, they have definitions for it in, in the legislature, so so that is what was being used, that's kind of what I, what I went with, because it was
I'm just trying to educate myself about the difference between this and registering on Airbnb and somebody who's operating a bed and breakfast. Because they do that in Woodstock, and they do that, well, they do it in Rutland City, I know, I don't know if anybody in the town that's running and operating a B and B.
You actually have one.
Okay, I, I just don't know that, and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't somehow catching somebody off guard that didn't know that they were not in compliance with a new regulation.
Right, so there is, there actually is a B and B, and, and they've actually already called me, and I spent a while talking with that. They were actually interested in, in, in this topic, in, 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 in what we were doing.
Okay.
Um, but the re, the reason I know, and I actually knew about it before they called me, because I found them on Airbnb. So
But it's not, it's, but it, it's a traditional B and B, or it's not?
It, it's not.
Okay.
So it probably is a short-term rental.
Well, it is now, yeah, I mean, it's
Okay.
it would, it would meet this, so I, I, you know, I did, I did, I did think about that, but in, in the long run, so there, there were several reasons where putting this in place became beneficial for the town, for the renters, and even for the owners.
Sure.
And a lot of it is awareness and safety for the occupants, so having some regulation on the on the bed and breakfasts would be beneficial for kind of everybody, so.
So are we saying that a traditional bed and breakfast would fall under these?
It has to do with how many nights they rent, they allow their rooms to be rented, if they, if they're, meet these requirements, then yes, they would be under this.
And I have a question about that later, but
Okay.
Norm?
Um, I guess one question was answered, is that this would include traditional B and Bs, and I think that's the right thing.
Yes, but
Yes, but
We'll say the number is, you could probably count the number on one hand, so this isn't going to affect
But it's governed by the definitions.
Yes.
And if it's a four unit, then it, if it only takes four, it's below the threshold. Right, um, I, you know, I don't want to go over, I looked at it closely, no, not so closely, quickly this evening. What I'd like to do is just send you a copy of my handwritten notes, rather than take up time, and if you can read it, if not, then
Yeah.
give me a call. If anybody else wants them, I'll include it as well, but why don't we just let Bill look at it?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then decide whether we send them out or something. Jerry, did you want to?
Well, I just, I don't know, I think, I think Dana might maybe agreed, I don't know, but and the, the purpose to me, kind of, it was I, although I like a very direct way.
Yeah.
It, it basically, you know, it, to me, it almost sounded like it, it was saying you're, you're not a very good person if you do this or company, and please don't come to our town, because we'd rather not have you. That's the way I read it, and
The, the opening part of it?
Yeah, the purpose, so
The purpose of the ordinance, yeah.
I, I just used the language, and I just kind of rewrote it, I, I think.
Well, that, that, that came from some, that came as a, as a, a, a combination of some other ones as well. And I actually had originally taken I actually was taking that out, and I worked at, at, at BoV actually, and I talked about that, and he said it should, it should stay in there, he says, because it really tells people why we're, why we really want to do this.
Who said that?
At BoV.
The Regional Planning Commission.
Oh.
He worked on bylaw.
Right, the one
But, but, but I think, I, I definitely, this is just my opinion, it can stay, and if that's the, if that's the, what everybody wants to do, it definitely should be rewritten to the point that it says all the same language, but we welcome you to come to this town and buy a piece of property, even if you choose to Airbnb it. To me, this sounds so direct, it's basically discouraging people from buying, it's basically saying, hey, you, you do this, you really suck. It's kind of the way I took it, and I, I don't, I don't think that that's really what we want to say.
I, I think you could, I, I, I'm gonna agree with you, Jerry, I, I think that the way it comes across is that we don't want this in
Right, and I, I, I agree with, I agree with all the language, but I can just print off or show everybody what I, but I just used almost exactly the same language, but just tweaked it to make it sound like, we're good with you coming here, but these following things can happen. Um, that's all.
I, I, I think we don't want those things to happen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of
So I, I
I don't, I don't know, as I agree with it, I, I think, I, I'm just, I, I just, I think that we, we have an obligation as a town to welcome anybody that comes here, I think that that goes with the whole, like, you know, no matter what, what we're talking about.
But there, there are a lot of negative things that come as a result of, of the Airbnb process. And, and I, I think we would prefer not to have it, I'm not, I'm just
Yeah, yeah, and I, I respect your opinion, but I, I, I really disagree, I mean, I think we
We, we certainly want to have a little more control
Yes.
of what's going on in the marketplace.
That I'm absolutely good with, and I think that one, one major thing in here that I noticed is there's a, there's a, a thing that says that Vermont Department of Fire Safety
Yep.
or Public Safety
Yeah.
may need to, it absolutely is, hands down has to. That I am absolutely one hundred percent positive of, if there is a short-term rental in your home in a two-family, in a single-family, it does not matter. They need to be inspected by them, they cannot be rented unless they're inspected by them. So that's, that's a, that's a big change, and, and with that comes a lot of uh, safety and, and clarity, and um, but I just, I just, I, I, I just think that they're here, and they're not gonna go away, and I think that regulating them is big, but I just don't think that we, in fact, I think uh, there was a, a piece of property sold recently that I'm aware of, and probably Bill is as well, and it's a big, nice, beautiful house, and this person bought it solely with the purpose of Airbnb in it.
Oh, we have several.
Yeah, several, I, I'm sure of that, I, I just know, I just talking of one particular one, and I'm thinking, do we really want to discourage this people from, this person from putting his tax dollars in our town? If it's, if it's regulated, I don't, I don't
But do we want to have some say on whether we can safely, you know, respond to a fire?
Well, I'm, I'm absolutely for all that, I'm just saying that, that this purpose sounds like we're saying, we don't want, we don't want these, and, and I understand that there may be that opinion too, I, I get it, but um, I, I'm all for regulating them, I'm all for doing all the things that Bill has put some work in to do to start to guideline this, but I just don't think we should discourage it.
Yep.
Yeah, Norm.
The language is very direct, Jerry's right. And um, I think it needs to be in a number of situations, but certainly in the introductory purpose to section two, introductory sentence to paragraph to section, section two. Int introductory sentence, the paragraph to sec- section two, it needs to be softened.
Where are you?
And it needs, unregulated short term rentals have. I think it should.
Where can you?
Section two.
Yeah, and this is just.
To preserve and protect.
Dana, let him finish, okay?
I'm trying to follow and I'm not following, so.
Section two.
I'm on section two, purpose, and he's referencing number two and this is.
No, 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 unregulated.
Sentence.
First sentence.
Oh.
Yeah, first sentence.
Yep.
You know, I'm uncomfortable with the judgment as it reads now that they have negative effects. I think it should say may have negative secondary effects, which gives us, you know, authority. To um, regulate uh, without condemning. By saying they have, because they, they don't all have, a few may have, so, some weekends, many may have. But it's an industry, I think, that's going to be here, uh, that's gotten ahead of us in a sense. And we need to catch up in a sensible way. And um, I think it takes some time. I think this is a hell of a good, pardon me, correct the record. It's a very good start. It really is. And I think we can tweak it. Jerry's done some stuff. I'm not going to go into all my word picking. Um, but I'll certainly visit with Bill about it.
Okay, well, we weren't really, um, we weren't given a, the assignment to actually come up with this. Bill went straight to the select board. And they liked the idea and, yeah, I just asked if we could, you know, have a meeting or two, we could look at it. And maybe start the public meeting process with it. Um, but try to keep the process going. Um, that I think the select board is in favor of because um. Uh, Bill and, and I think members of the select board would like to get this enacted this year before.
Before, before the fourth quarter, for, for sure. So if there's things, some language want to change, like. Do we want to add may have negative secondary effect? That's fine. Like I, I, you know. A, a lot, because a lot of this was, was taking it from other, o- other towns that says, hey, this, this, this works well. And, and some of these towns that have. Pretty successful programs, this, this is what they're using. So I, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't disagree that it probably could use some polishing. But there, there was, there was a lot of cutting and pasting from, from different ones with this together. So.
I assume that's where it came from. I mean, I know that's right.
Yeah, and I think, I think that one might have been Woodstock. They, they were, they were a little.
Yeah.
Other ones, so I didn't use some of theirs, but, but uh, but I was, you know, trying to find it, trying to find a, a purpose that kind of. Gave the, the overall purpose that we, what we, wh- what, what we're, what, why we're doing this, what we want to avoid. So. If we want to, if we want to change it, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Like I, I don't, it's not gonna. Changing the, the language and the purpose is not going to change what we're doing.
Right.
Maybe it makes it sound a little nicer.
Well, yeah, along with, along with a, a, yeah, that's, well, I want to.
Is that the only thing that we're really focusing on?
Well, I think, I, I think that there is a um, um, I think that there needs to be something said in there that, that, that needs to reword how the state is involved. So. Because that's our biggest, that's our biggest.
That's down a little farther. So we, we, we get that. And, and there, there are some, there are some things in here which. I didn't like the way the other towns did it. So I changed it myself and did some arbitrary things. So if we want to, want to just go through and touch on some of the sections. I'm, I'm happy to, to, to talk about some of the, changing some of those.
So, okay, so we got the purpose. Um, and then we have definitions. Those are. Do we want to put, do we want to add um, bed and breakfasts here or are they?
Well, sure. But I, I thought about that. I, I don't know. So. Uh, we, I, we, it defines what a short term rental is. And if a bed and breakfast is operating under the. Number of consecutive days and counted throughout your, that's what they are. They're still a short term rental, even though they're. With, somebody could say they're a, they're a, they're a. Whatever they, they say whatever they are and. Private, private motel and they're still going to be a, a, a short term rental. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if we want to say that. If we need to, even need to say it includes bed and breakfast. I, I, I know what you mean about wanting to make sure, but.
Because all hotels basically are short term rentals.
Right, but they're, but they're, but because of their, because of their commercial capacity, they are regulated differently. So we don't, we don't have to. Be, we don't have to do this.
That, that was my question about a, a traditional bed, bread and breakfast where you have multiple rooms and. And it's like a, a hotel functioning like a hotel where you have a bathroom, you may actually have a um, you, you know, a bedroom. And then there's a common area where you are provided breakfast. I just wanted to know whether they were going to fall under this and it sounds like they are. So that just is just a, it's a communication tool.
Yep.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Norm.
Um, I think this needs some work and it needs some, some detail, which I think would be foolish to take up here. Um, for instance, I think uh, under section three, uh, the term dwelling unit needs to be defined. It's.
It is defined.
Well, it's defined as dwelling unit capacity, but not dwelling unit. So I think, you know, and maybe we could. You know, but the term is used repeatedly. Um. Anyways, you know, just a thought. Um, it doesn't deal with cooperative apartments, uh, co-ops. Um, or regular apartments for that matter. Um, and if we start to get high rises, does it apply to, it doesn't seem to apply to that.
Regular apartment, long term rental? Like.
Yeah.
Isn't an apartment a long term rental?
Yeah, but it is, but if it's going to subterm, if it's going to sublet a room.
It references no sublet, uh, something in here.
But Norman, someone rents an apartment for a year lease and they sublet it, that's, that's up to, that's not part of this, that, that.
But if they sublet it for a weekend or twice a month. Anyway, I, I think it's that kind of thing that you and I need to sit down, talk about a little bit. And um. Not take up all night with it here.
Okay.
Well, okay.
Um.
Can I just ask a, uh. A planning question. All of your blue are uh, for review by the attorney. Is that correct? Perfect. Thanks. That's what I thought.
So if, if Barbara, if you're, are you saying basically that, that they're not looking for us to go through the document as a whole?
Um, they are, they've asked us to review it. Yes.
So is that going through it as a whole? I'm just, I'm just asking the question. I mean, I think that, that.
Yeah, I would think so.
It just seems like we've done really good work doing a lot of these ordinances. We cleaned up so much language and things that I never thought, even thought about before. Kind of this group got together. And it just seems to make sense that we all just kind of bump ideas off each other and. Continue the process for this. I know the time might be a little bit of a struggle, but.
I, I, I absolutely don't mind going, going through it.
Yeah.
I think the board and intended to have the process, but we tried, we tried, we wanted to do this. Make it something we wanted to get in place, but before the end of the year.
Right.
And given.
Are we talking June 30?
Sorry?
Are we talking June 30?
Fall.
No, no, well, before fall. So.
Okay.
Because there's a 60 day window for anyone to become effective, we have to work backwards from that timeline and looking at like. We meet every three weeks, how many meetings we have, like four, you know, before we can really get this in place. So. That's why I really dove in and, and put a lot of work into this to get.
And it shows.
Get this. Well, thank you. To get, to get this. So that way, if there's some things we want to change. Norm, I don't know how, you know, how, if we, we, you know, it's things like thinking about the subdivision one where we say, you know. They shall be all underground utilities. Now we're having to deal with going back, going back. How detailed income areas do we, do we need to be? You know, with the, with the apartment thing being sublet, I, I don't know. I mean, that, that's, that can be a hard thing to, to do, but um. We have to, you know, that, that becomes an enforcement part of it to kind of catch somebody doing it that, where they're not supposed to do it. So. Um.
Like a, like an advertising.
There's other little ambiguities. Um.
Okay.
And I think if you and I sat down for a half an hour. Take care of it.
Okay.
And you, you might want to, I mean, you could invite Ed to that conversation too. If you want Ed Bo.
Yep.
So if you're talking about definitions on, uh, it's on page three under section four, compliance with the applicable laws.
Yep.
You have the term public building, but it's not, you don't find that in the definitions. And I think that it might be helpful.
So that definition is in the statute.
Okay.
So I didn't include it because it's, you've got a public building under that statute. So.
Makes sense.
I could, I could add it.
We're just referencing.
The, the reason that I raised that question is because when you're talking about a public building and Norman was uh, asking about a dwelling unit.
Yep.
Uh, since there are a number of terms that we're throwing out.
Yeah.
It might be helpful to the reader to have them all defined in one place. And my question then would be, what is the difference between a public building and a dwelling unit?
Like a hotel is a public building because if it's, because.
This is a.
Definition.
Yeah.
And these are private, private, private residences being used for this. So.
Right, but there's some, somewhere in here it references, uh, it may be a public building, depending on how.
Taxes. It says specifically, or it, it, so yes, it does. Uh, under short term rental, it says a short term rental constitutes a hotel. Uh, well, it, it talks about the same thing. Um. May qualify the building as a public building subject to the jurisdiction of the Division of Fire Safety. Um, a short term rental constitutes a hotel for the purposes of state and meals tax. So it's saying a public building for the purposes of fire safety gets, gets jurisdiction to inspect it. That's why they're saying a short term rental is for the purposes of fire and safety is a public building. It ge- so it gives them jurisdiction to do the inspection.
Uh, understood. Uh, but you've got, you've got the term public building there. And if you're looking at the, the definition section, I think it would be beneficial. To, to just carry that over so that people know what they're uh, referring to.
All right, no problem.
Seems like we could, in the period of time, we need to accomplish this to the best that we possibly can using all this stuff as guidelines and maybe, maybe even almost word for word. Because I think this is going to be a learning curve the first year. So it may have to be gone completely through to really tweak it. I think it's going to be pretty uh, interesting job for whoever's job it's going to be.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I know who it is, Bill. I, I, I figured. I didn't want to say it and freak you out.
So, okay, um, we'd also like, um, I talked to the select board about doing a meeting at this level in front of us. Just to start getting the word out. Maybe one or two people will attend, maybe, you know, maybe not. Um, but.
Well, I'm, I'm going to put the, the articles for the circle are due April 1st. Which is a Saturday, so it's probably not April 1st. But uh, I'm, I'm going to pretty much make my, my article that time about, about this.
Mm-hmm.
So to say that this is coming and there will be a, a, a meeting, meeting about, at a planning commission meeting. So pay attention to the agendas.
Yeah, or should we set a date tonight?
So I have, I sent it to Kevin. Three weeks ago, and I haven't even gotten an acknowledgement that he has it. So I, it'd be great, love to. Can't say for sure we're going to have it, but you know.
Yeah.
We're back in time. I, you know, I, I mainly, I wanted him mainly for the, for the statutory references to make sure that we're covered under those.
Yep.
But um, I mean, we could say.
We could say April 20th.
Yeah.
What's happening on April 20th?
That's our.
We're saying.
A public meeting.
Yeah.
Just going to get out there to have a, a, to advertise a, a public meeting about, about the ordinance, about people and ask questions.
Just that it's happening.
Yes.
Not that we.
That we're drafting one and this is why and.
It's informational, not, not of an approval or presentation.
None of the, right.
No, that's, that's select board's duty.
Yep.
Yep.
So this, this is a great example of the, this, of what happens all the time with the state and kind of the job I do. So I. This, the state statute, it says in section four, a public building under uh, ten BSA. And may be subject to the authority of the state of Vermont. We're being told absolutely positively, you're not to wire anything if it's intended to be Airbnb without a permit. So. That's where this, that's where this never seems to come. You know, is that the authority having jurisdiction that we're speaking with and they feel that it should be, but they don't actually have statute to do that? I'm not sure. So I do have a, I do have a, a continuing education class here next weekend and I, I'm absolutely stocking.
Good timing.
But you're thinking then.
To report back to us and tell.
Yeah, I will. I know what he's going to say, but we'll see.
So Jerry.
But just a minute, Dana. Um. Mary Beth or Jim, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Uh, I got some catching up to do, so I don't think I'm uh. I'm set yet to make too many comments.
Okay, so yeah, the three week um, um, you know, timeframe that we have to look at this again will probably be helpful to all of us.
Mary Beth? Yeah, I um, looked through, I um, agree with most of the language. I think. Yeah, the definitions could use a little bit more work. Um. Or just have more of them. Um, but overall, I thought it made sense and looks good.
Yep. Okay, Dana.
Uh, my question was to Jerry. You think that that maybe should be is subject.
Or yeah, whatever the proper word, but I think, I think that since the state statute's there and it says it may be subject to. You know, who's, who's right and who's wrong. I mean, I'm, you know, we're being told absolutely. If it's a portion of the house or a whole house or whatever, that it needs to be inspected. Um, so it's just interesting that.
We want to change the, under short term rental, that, the definition, which, which, which part are you?
Well, I'm looking at um, section four, compliance with app, uh, with applicable laws.
Okay.
I just wonder if that state statute's there and it says maybe subject. I wonder if I'm incorrect, but I, I just know what I've been told over and over. Um, so it's interesting.
They and is subject?
That he's going to check back.
The question is. Yeah, that's the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Is or shall be, and you, you're going to have a, you're going.
State electoral inspector, I'll, I'll.
Ask that question. Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can get the answer to that.
Um.
Jerry really hit on a very good point. Um, that word I had circled as well. And um. The um. The difference between may, may and shall is night and day. And may. Doesn't put any, doesn't put the force of the town behind it. So.
Right, but if it's not our statute, if it's statutory, I think Jerry's point is that the, if the statute says that it is, then that's what it should be.
If the statute says it may, then we better.
Yeah, it's true.
Right, because you, you're referencing a statute, so.
Right, right.
Well, maybe we can just clear it up in how we present it. Um, but that may and shall are legalese that have lots of teeth behind them.
And the other, the other thing is that with the state. If someone requests an inspection, regardless of who it is, the state has to look at it. So residential properties in the state of Vermont don't get inspected. But, but if someone, if, if Howard asks that his house be inspected because I've done work there and he just wants to make sure that it was done right. They have to go look. It's, it's state statute that they have to. So. It seems to me like regardless of even what that statute says, that our, our document should say that they have to.
Yeah.
Because it's really the only way that we have to ensure that there's safety things put in place there. We don't, we don't have anybody that can go look themselves. Certain, you know, Bill's not going to go to every house. So. It seems like that that should be that it has to happen. Which will also discourage some of those people that are, are thinking about doing something. It's, it, it could potentially cost them quite a bit of money. So it's important that we do that. That people really are honest and doing the best job at it. It could be the only ones that sugar off the top.
Dana, something else?
Now, I've got a couple of things on, uh, I think it's page one, two, three. It's under, it's still under our definitions. Um, there's a reference, there's a note um, under dwelling capacity. And it, it says, uh, if there is a state or local uh, wastewater permit, which requires a different. Uh, dwelling unit capacity than the permit shall determine the capacity. Fine. Clean slate, which is also not defined, but permit exemptions. Only pertain to wastewater systems constructed prior to uh, July 1st, 2007, that do not have either a local or wastewater. Uh, state wastewater permit. Existing municipal wastewater permits issued prior to July 1st, 20, uh, 2007 remain in effect. What does that all mean?
In 2007, the state took over from municipalities wastewater permitting.
Yep.
That means that if your permit was issued, and so they didn't require them before 87?
Eighty seven, two thousand.
Two thousand. Nope, they didn't require them before 87. The municipalities, municipalities had approval from nineteen eighty seven through 2007. I have every one of them in my office for the town. After 2007, the state took it over.
Yep.
So what they're saying is if it was in place prior to 2007 and it hasn't been changed, it's still. So what they're saying is if it was in place prior to two thousand and seven and it hasn't been changed, it's still in effect. So whatever I have on my file is what it is. So if they're saying we have a three-bedroom, but now we want a fourth bedroom, they actually have to go to the state to apply to add that to their wastewater system.
Okay.
Which case it changes the existing permit.
Even if it happened before two thousand and seven.
So to me, this is gobbledygook and doesn't mean a whole lot. I understand your explanation. I think that the explanation should be that prior to two thousand and seven, it was locally, it should just state that. That they were locally issued. A permit issued prior to two thousand and seven that was local is still in effect. Uh, after two thousand and seven, uh, permits have to, uh, be obtained from the state to be valid. The other point would be that if you're changing the, uh, the, uh, the number of, uh, dwelling units. After, or whatever, after two thousand and seven, regardless of whether you had one before, you'd need to apply to the state. Because that is completely clear and unambiguous. When I read this, I read it three times and then I decided to put a question mark and say, what's the meaning of this?
Okay.
So thanks.
Maybe there's some other language.
That, that, that was a copy and paste one.
That's okay. You knew what it meant, but I had no idea. And I, I tried three times and then I said, I'm just going to put a question mark. Uh, under short-term rental, uh, it says. Uh, a furnished house condominium or the dwelling. Uh, rented or, uh, uh, to the transient, traveling or vacationing public for a period of fewer than thirty consecutive days and for more. Than fourteen days per calendar year.
Yep.
Okay, so my question to my.
That's the statute.
That, that's fine. I, I, I get that. So that covers, uh, more than fourteen, but fewer than thirty. So you're talking about a sixteen-day period. Correct?
No, it's, it's talking about two different things. So it's if you're, if you're renting it for a period of less than thirty days at any given.
Consecutive days. Yep.
And if you're doing it for more than fourteen days in an entire year.
Okay.
This is what you are.
Okay, yep. I thought that that was, uh, I thought that that might be the, but it's not. So those are not, uh, consecutive. Those fourteen days have nothing to do with consecutive. It's just total, uh, more than a total of fourteen days per calendar year. The to, the word total would make that completely.
So I have a question about that. If, if. If it's less than fourteen days a year that you're renting it, you don't need any of this?
That's right. That's what I'm.
They're not a short-term rental.
Now, why wouldn't everybody just tell us that?
Well, they might, but.
Hope they're don't.
Right. Well, this seems a little bit.
Right. So my, my question that I had put here was, so what happens if you're renting it all for seven days?
Right.
It doesn't.
If you're renting it for, if, if you rent it for seven days. And then you leave and then Jerry comes into for seven days and he leaves, that's fourteen days in the calendar year. It's done.
No, right. And then you're subject to this.
Yes.
But if it's just thirteen days for the whole calendar year, you don't need to comply with any of.
Whether they're consecutive or not consecutive. Right, that was my point. Okay.
That, that's an or for those, the consecutive and the total.
What it says, yeah.
Can we lower that?
Well.
It says.
That's a stat, you said that was statutory enough.
Seems like they should comply if they're doing it even like seven days.
Definition in there. I, I, I don't know. We can, we can be.
That's, I don't find.
We can be more strict, we can't be less strict.
It's not confusing to me, other than I just think anybody could say, say they're going to rent the place for about a month a year. They could say, oh. We didn't rent it for more than that. We rented it for thirteen days. That was it.
But that's going to be to a venue put in, isn't it?
Yeah, well, seven, well, seven kind of reels you in pretty close. Any, any lower amount, I.
My only question about that was that the word total would make it, would disambiguate. That it's total, uh, fourteen, uh, days total per calendar year.
But I don't have to wait.
But.
Where, that, that.
I'm on the short-term rentals. I'm online on the definition. I'm on line one, two, three. It starts with fewer than thirty consecutive days. You with me, Norman there?
What section?
Ken.
Short-term, it's definitions, short-term rentals.
Right.
I'd like to, um.
I have a question also.
Yeah, okay, sure. And, and I'd like to wrap this up sometime soon here and just have us compile comments for Bill.
Well, I, I was going to say something similar to that because we, we haven't gone through the, the thing at a higher level and we're. We're right down in the weeds and there may be. There may be things that we want to stay in a different way, and then we worry more about. The specifics of words. I would think so. If we planned, are we, if we plan to go through this again as a group.
Yep.
I'd like to do that before we start. Rewarding. And dotting i's and crossing t's.
I just made an observation like Jerry and others have made about the clarification of a sentence. I'm just asking for whether that putting one word in would. Uh, be amenable to the group in terms of helping to make it, uh. Unambiguous as opposed to thirty consecutive days, and then it says fourteen days, which could lead the reader to believe that it's fourteen consecutive days. I'm just trying to disinvigorate that by saying total. Is that approved? Is that agreeable to people or not? Because that's actually the interpretation that Bill just shared with us.
What, what we're, where we're headed Dana is that we're going to use the next three weeks. To pull together these suggestions and, and.
So, so why is it when other people make a suggestion to clarify, we, we have a discussion, but if I make one. It does, it.
It's not, it's not you. It's, it's a you with my third one. That's all. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't that with you. Certainly from my.
It's nothing personal. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at the agenda and. Wanting to.
I'm done. I don't have any other comments. It was to make a clarification on a word.
So I mean, that, I, I mean, I suppose we could add the word. I mean, but that, that, that comes directly from the. Definition in the statute.
But don't change it.
I mean, we certainly can, but I'm not, I'm, I don't, I mean.
There's no reason to change it. And there's all the reasons in the world not to change it. If it's in statute that way. So, okay, um, anything else before we leave this for, for. Us to review over the next three weeks?
Uh.
Lots of bones tonight. And. Norm, you're still, you're still going to be meeting with Bill?
Well, well, I'm going to send him my stuff and if he wants me to meet with.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
That's fine.
Yep. Be happy to.
Okay, um, anything else? On this? So if we. We meet on the thirtieth of this. Do we still think we want, do we still think we can make a public meeting, be ready for a public meeting? On April twentieth, the following meeting? If we push it into May, it's. Then give it to the select board after that. I guess it's.
You're trying to get this done by the end of December?
Well, we're, um.
Oh, no, I, my, my goal was to have this for like October first.
Then you, you've got sixty days after the select board.
In effect by the end of September, by the end of September.
I think, I think actually the, I think, I think I picked November first in here. As the day this would begin. So it'd be like. September first would be the date this, by the, by, by September first, I'd want the select board to. Adopt it.
So if we have, if we've given it to the, okay, so the select board needs to adopt it in, at a June meeting.
No, they adopted in a September meeting. But it's sixty days from the date of it's.
The goal in effect.
Yes, it's sixty days.
Okay.
So we could push this into May.
Yep, we could.
Good.
I, I don't know what the date would be for our meeting, if you want to put that in your article.
It'll be the second week of May, I think.
May eleventh. And then June first.
Say May eleventh.
Yeah, I think that would work.
Norm, did you have something?
I was just going to say, you know, it may necessitate a special meeting in between. Uh, uh, regular meetings.
Why is that?
So, but given the tightness of the schedule. We should not. Um, overlook the possibility of a special meeting. Particularly a public meeting in between. Our regularly scheduled meetings.
Well, I mean, this, this is exactly what the select board was hoping we didn't do.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, we, we asked, we asked especially, I asked especially if we could take a look at it. And, um, otherwise Bill was just going to just run it right through the select board. Um, because they are interested in, in getting something on the books.
If, if they want to. Push it through without.
I think we can get it done.
I, I think we can get it done.
Between now, if we have the March thirtieth and April twentieth meetings, I, I don't think that. Based on what I've done for a review of this, and I did look at some of your other documents. I, I think substantively, there are a lot of good things in here. I think like Jerry said, you, we might want to soften the purpose and you might want to tidy things up. If the statute says. The way it is, then you don't need my word for totals. So you can skip that. I don't think it's going to take a whole lot of time to get that. Uh, put together. If we can't get it done at the next meeting, it certainly shouldn't be done.
And the bigger picture, Norm, is that these are all brand new. People, towns are just now. Uh, adopting these things, you know, writing them and adopting them. And, and, you know, Kevin Brown, our town attorney, I think he's probably worked on one of these.
One, one, for sure.
Yeah, Hillington, and that may be the only one he has experience with. So. If we don't get it right, you know, we can always, the select board can always open it back up again, um. But, you know, the bottom line is everyone's trying to do it as well as they can right now with incomplete information. You know, and, and, and incomplete precedent and, and. All that sort of stuff.
So what is our plan? As far as this, as a, as a group, are we going to review this again?
Yes.
At a subsequent meeting?
Yeah, on the thirty. And if we need to put that into April.
Want to send me some notes, like say, hey, here, here, here's something that, that, you know, needs to be changed. Please do. And then, you know, I, I can, I can add it to it. So, you know, I.
Young Sheldon is over. I'm going to try the book on. At eight thirty.
Okay.
Are you done?
No, still listening.
No, we can hear you, Andy. That, that we heard great. So. You know.
That's right.
Oh, they heard you. Yeah, you said young. They think.
Andy, you should mute yourself.
I know. I'm having a little fun here. But I can hear everything just fine. I didn't, I wasn't sure you could hear me. But since, but since I had the, the floor right now. I would like to just say one thing, we're working on this, is that, and that I think that we should not have. Any fourteen-day. Um. Period before the Airbnb thing takes effect. It should be. One day, anyone who operates for a day has to come underneath the regulations. And I would like to meet with. Uh, if you guys can announce to me what, when the, uh. When you're going to meet, I'm available to be on Zoom anytime. I just don't have tonight, I don't have internet service, so. From now on, I'll be able to have good, good connection.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I think some of that might be in statute, Andy, um, and it doesn't look. And it doesn't look like we'll need, uh, any special meeting, so we'll talk about this again. The next time we do is on the thirtieth. Of March.
Great. I'll be there.
Okay. Okay.
I'll mute myself now. I hope I provide everyone with a couple of laughs, that's all.
This is like, this is like on purpose, right?
This is. This is. I'd much rather be at the meeting in purpose, on in person.
Yeah. Are you going to make it on the thirtieth?
Oh yeah, definitely.
Okay.
No, I'm not. I'm going to be in Zoom. I'm going to be in Zoom. I'm going to be here until, till, until June.
Okay.
But I, I'll make every meeting, uh, via Zoom. And you'll be, you know, I'll have a better connection next time.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So long, everybody.
See ya.
Bye.
Bill.
Okay. The, the input, the input is welcome. I, I, I want, I want, you know, do I think we're going to get it right the first time it's out there? Probably not. Uh, but. You know, I, I, I welcome, I welcome the input because I'd like to try and get as close as we can. You know, I, I'm, I'm looking to make sure we have our major things covered and. You know, the, the four, the, the fourteen-day minimum thing, I think that's. Probably a function of other regulatory issues that come into play when we say this is what you are. Like having fire safety, if somebody rents a room for one night. Now there's something to fire safety, like. You know, the, so.
They're too busy as it is.
Yeah, it's exactly. So, you know, I think, I think they said, let's, let's say fourteen days, because they're not, they're not trying to make a business out of it. If they're doing more than fourteen days, yeah, if they're doing it for less than fourteen days in a year, it's not going to have any impact.
Makes sense.
Make, they go, I, I don't disagree that they should still probably have an inspection, because there's probably things that they're going to find that are an issue. So, um. So I, I, you know, I, I welcome the input. Like I said, thi, this is, this is a lot, a lot of this I took, probably ninety-five percent of it I took. From a variety of sources and, and I think I gave you guys some and, and literally this, I, I have a whole folder of, of statutes and ordinances and applications from other towns that I've, that I've been using. So. I've also been working with people at Airbnb on some of the topics too, so, um. Uh, so I, I welcome the input. I, I, you know, my, my goal in getting it in to you guys in this form was to help. Make it a less time-consuming process to get through and, and. You know, if, if we, if, if. We put it out there with, and we don't have public building defined and people start asking questions about it, then we could say, okay. We can, we could go back and add public building as a definition. A year into this. And the, but the ordinance is still in effect. So I don't want to slow up. I, I, I mean, I don't want to put one out there that's not good. I, I want to make sure we're, we're making it clear, but if we find something later on that say, oh, well, you know, we really should define. Public building and dwelling unit. Do we want to wait on approving the whole document first because we don't have a couple of things defined when, you know, also, I also think about it is. If these people are doing this, then some of those things they're already aware of. And we don't, you know, we, yeah, it's important to define them, but a lot of these things. That some people are already going to be aware of and we don't, we don't need to, you know, ha, make sure to have it in there before we launch it.
Okay. Any other comments? Before we move, Norm?
I think what we have to keep in mind. Is that. Any piece of legislation. Is really only as good as the fair notice it gives. The people regulated. The businesses regulated. And if we're ambiguous. If we're, um, using permissive instead of required. Verbiage. That may not be the fair notice that they're entitled to. So I think we have to be careful. Well, just as Jerry. Did at the beginning of this. With how it's worded. I know it's a pain in the tail. Sometimes, and you know, it's too lawyer-esque and it's too picky, but. If it's going to hold up. We have to be fair to the people who are regulated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I think we can do that. I think this really is a very good start. And I just think it needs. Some massaging.
Okay.
And you were to be commended for putting it together so quickly. It really is.
Sure.
So, and I, I understand the giving people the notice, which is why, like I had put. As of November first. So we're not saying like. As of May first, this is going to affect. So that's why I want to get it out there. So people have the time to get things in line. Before it actually takes effect. So there's, there's different timelines we're, we're kind of working with here. So I, I, I agree. So I wa, I want to. Get the information out there for the people that are affected by this, have the time to make sure they're, they're, they're ready to go. Because we don't want to discourage people from doing this. I mean, the people are. Because the other side of this is they're contributing and that's what, what we're trying to make sure also is they're contributing to our local option tax. And that's very important to the town. So the more of these we get on the books, the, and, and the, and when they're all lined up, then that's beneficial to the town. That way as well. So it's making sure that, that everybody is on the same level.
Well, you're also taking application fees, which could be up to a thousand dollars per year for, uh, you know, a five-bedroom and a, uh, and the application of. Uh, the application fee of what is it? Five hundred dollars?
Uh, no, it's not that much. No, it's, it was, it wasn't that much. I, I, I play around that, that's, that's an arbitrary number. So that, that, that we can negotiate, we can, we can talk about that one, but I forget what it was, but, uh.
Well, it's a hundred per, it's a hundred per bedroom, which if you have a five-bedroom, that's five hundred, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It wa- it wouldn't be a thousand. It's, I, I think I put a hundred dollars plus a hundred, a hundred for each bed.
Sorry. I was confusing it with some penalties.
The, there's the, the penalties were, were, could get up there and that, those were per day, but that's.
We'll talk about that next time.
Yeah.
Yep.
They make a very big income on this.
Yeah.
A thousand bucks and.
That's why, that's why I didn't really feel bad about it.
No, my point, what to Norman's was that in addition to the one percent option tax, we would be getting considerable income from those being registered with us. So that, that's all.
That was, that was really clear. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. I think we should move on. So take a look at the ordinance and also take a look at the registration form. Want to give that a look over before the next meeting? And let's move to the very familiar, uh, permit tracking ordinance. And Bill, the copy you sent, we sent out to everyone, um, still has the, what we wanted to change, you know, at what we decided to change in our last meeting in section three with the animals.
That's what I took him about.
You, you may have sent us an old version.
Under building, right?
Under, yeah, building.
So it's so used for sh- used for the shelter or enclosure of persons, equipment or personal property.
Yeah.
That's what it, that's what it will read.
Yeah, that was what our motion was.
Right.
So take out animals?
Yes. All right, I thought I sent. I got a lot of versions of that.
Yeah, and maybe just, yeah. So whatever we send the.
Oh, yeah.
The select board, yeah.
It's, that, that's, that's it. It's taking out the word animals.
What section is this in?
It's, um, it's page one, three, definition, section three.
Definitions, buildings.
Removing the word animals.
We, we've discussed this last time and.
Right. It was in the, actually, it's in the minutes.
Yeah, it is.
I made the motion.
I thought I sent out a copy that I put, I put it, I have, I have one of the words red, but I don't know if that's, if that came through or not like that, but like, I've got a lot.
Well, I think once you do that, we're ready to send this back over to the select board and see what they want to do with it. Then we should be finished with that. Is there, um, anything new Dana on the subdivision ordinance?
No, Bill and I were supposed to get together, uh, last time and, um, for some reason I missed his invitation to, uh, do a couple of meeting times and then I sent out what I had for availability, but, um, we weren't able to connect. So.
I responded back.
Oh, you did?
I did.
When?
Today.
Oh.
I wasn't here yesterday. Yesterday was my birthday. I took it.
No, that's okay.
Happy related birthday.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it today, but today was not the day that I was available. So, um, so maybe we can connect next week. I have Tuesday and we can compare calendars at the end if you want, Bill.
And we're down to just reorganizing it, relabeling.
The next time you get a version, it should be, the only thing that we should be looking at is what is going to the attorney for review.
Yep. And everything else should be, you know, all the sections should be.
Right. Everything that's been taken out, right. And Bill will have.
I think it may be beneficial to send out two versions. Here's the original version with everything. We have all the edits, all the things highlighted, and then here is a version of what it will look like in, in the future if, if we adopt it.
Well, yeah, that, that would be.
Here's the, here's the version that's going to Kevin for, for, to somebody. We haven't decided.
This is our, this is our sending version.
This is our sending version, right.
That would be an eye opener for sure.
It will.
Norm?
Yeah, I'm kind of embarrassed to say this and I hope it doesn't upset anybody. Uh, but in section four, permit required.
Which, which ordinance are we talking about, Norm?
Permit tracking?
Permit tracking.
Okay.
I think it's incomplete. I have some suggestive language.
Okay, Norm.
Too late?
You have, can you have this conversation with Dana offline?
On the permit tracking?
We're on the permit tracking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's got nothing to do with me.
Okay, we've, we've.
Yeah, maybe, you know, I, I'm embarrassed because this is pretty finite.
What do you got?
Um, in line three, section four, permit required, line three.
Line fifty-four, line fifty-five, line fifty-six? Okay.
Um, it says, as well as an enlargement or addition that presently says that increases the footprint of an existing structure. Now, I suggest that says that increases the footprint, the number of bedrooms or living space.
We can't, we couldn't do bedrooms. That's this is, this is correct. Yeah, bill bedroom, the bedroom thing we had to take, we, there was.
I think we even had it in there at one point.
Yeah.
And, and we had to take it out.
Yeah.
Why was that?
Because it gets into zoning.
Right.
We can't, we can't do it.
Well.
It doesn't, it doesn't. Yeah, there was, um.
There's, well, it, it says here at the bottom, sixty-one, an informational permit is required for the alteration of existing buildings or structure must be structure as plural. That results in an increase in the number of bedrooms. And I was just suggesting move it up into that other section. That, and, and eliminate this other sentence. And I apologize, I didn't pick it up.
Well, so the thing is, you could, you could make another bedroom within an existing structure too.
Right.
Um, I understand that. Um, but we're talking, I think, houses.
So I, I think Norman, what Howard's saying is that if you moved it up, it would be inadvertently or erroneously re- misrepresenting it because you're talking about increasing the size of the floor plan. A bedroom constructed within the existing uh, floor plan would not necessarily apply. So therefore you don't want to have bedrooms up there. And to Howard's point, in that final paragraph, starting with line sixty-one, an informational permit is required anytime that you, uh, create an additional bedroom regardless of whether it changes the footprint or not. So I think it's okay the way that it's written.
And, um.
Let me process this for a minute if I may.
Sure.
I seem to remember the same exact conversation.
Yeah.
I know. And, and, and Mary Ashcroft has read that, that this whole thing over and her one comment was that we, we can't regulate the number of animals. Well.
Oh, animals.
We already had taken that out, fixed that one.
Right. And that's why I made the motion last time to take out animals, but that's on a previous basis.
I, I don't. If you think it's necessary to keep it separate, that's fine. I don't agree with it, but it's not worth making a big stink over. I don't read it that way. But, okay. Like you can't hurt. Just move on.
Okay. Thanks for your attention to that, Norm.
I'm sorry?
Thanks for your attention and your, 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 your work on that. Um, I think we have discussed this and gone over this and we have run it by Mary Ashcroft. So I think we'll move on. So, okay. Um, it'd be easier to, if you don't mind, I'll give you the update on the pocket park, which is a little more a little easier to get through. Um, some progress is being made. The, the, the Green Mountain Power GMP, you know, application for relicensing uh, was, there was a formal notice put in the Rutland Herald um, in mid-February. And so that starts the clock on a sixty-day comment period on what they filed. And then, um, FERC, the, the federal agency that reviews this, um, has another, has a hundred and five days from February to respond to the comments. So, um, and another interpretation of that is that, um, the comments are due in April and FERC does its reply comments, uh, in June or by June. So that's moving. That's progress. Um, there, there is this interesting part in, in, in what they put in their official notice. Uh, one of the things, one of the last things they were going back and forth on was what, whatever happened to that park that I think it was Vermont Marble was planning for that area? And that the town of Rutland shut down, said they weren't interested. Th- this is FERC asking GMP, like, are you sure the town is, is interested now? So, um, so that was part of, you know, the response in December, going back and forth, one of the last back and forths that they had, that yes, uh, the town, um, is it, the GMP is not going to be developing that as a park. They're going to be working, they're, they're going to do some sort of a transfer to, to the town to get that done. So the town can develop recreation facilities in the same location. It was just kind of weird that, I don't know, I don't know anything about the history. Um, it looked like it went back, it was, I saw one map of the proposed park in the sixties or seventies.
I think I remember something, some talk about that way back when and it, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just kind of funny that a federal agency was like, you know.
That far back.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it was in their last license, I guess. So that it was going to happen.
What does FERC actually stand for?
Federal Ener- Energy Regulatory Commission, I believe. So they, so hydro power would fall into there.
Yep.
That canoe access still in this thing is a, a plan to be part of it, that.
What, what kind of access?
The access, the canoe or whatever it was going to be.
Oh, the, oh.
Boat launchers.
Yeah, um, we, we're not at that point, the, the select board is not at that point to decide what is in and what isn't. Um, I think their priorities right now is to, is to see this license through and to get that memorandum of understanding with GMP done. And, and that's not even the formal transfer. That's just like, we, you know, this, we agreed to do, this is a town and we as GMP agree to do this and we're moving forward, developing this park and is where we're headed. And, um, then there's also the cultural assessment that needs to be done, the archaeological work that GMP has told FERC is going to be done. So we have to await the results of that. So it's going to be a while before we finally decide what goes in that park and what doesn't. And, and I think it's going to be in stages. So it may be easier to make comments about, you know, what, what does end up going in there? What's safe and what's not safe?
I've heard so much about the safety of that. That's been my concern about
Yeah.
the liability of, of us, of putting something in where something could go wrong.
Right, right. So. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think there's pretty good consensus on having trails and, and, and picnic areas and some overlooks. But some of these other, you know, extra parking. Some of these other things are, I think, can still be discussed, definitely. So that's the pocket park. Um, any questions on that? The, um, other thing I wanted to discuss, uh, is the river corridor ordinance that we'll be working on, hopefully. Um, the select board said, go ahead and, and do some public outreach, definitely do some public outreach on that. So, um, still, I'm trying to get some of, of Kyle Madash's time, he's a pretty busy guy to talk more about this. One of the things we asked them to do is, is to give us, give us a, an example, maybe a, a town like Brandon and what, what happened to them during, um, tropical storm Irene and how the higher disaster relief rate from the state, um, you know, what, what that meant for the town? You know, how much more, how much less money the town had to expend on that. So uh, I'm sure Kyle's working on that. For our outreach, um, like to still twine with the idea of doing some field visits. Uh, we've got, maybe I can put this up. And just go around. Yes. Hey. Do I have, yeah, there we go. Um, we've got the northeastern part. And so, um, the pink is the river corridor. And, um, most of the hash marks are, um, uh, special flood hazard area with the darker purple is the actual floodway. So we've got, um, we've got a lot of, of potential impact in the northeast part of the town. There's also a Tenny Brook area. But I don't, you know, I don't know, like if, if we do outreach, is there anyone that's going to be doing any development in, in that wet area anyway? So that's a question. Then, then, um, so we see some impact in the Moon Brook watershed. And one of the things we'll have to do is.
That's over to the left, correct?
Over to the right, the very, uh, eastern part of the town, all those small streams here. Um, there's.
Do you have a cursor that you can show? Cause I'm.
Yeah, let me go.
You're talking about down on the lower right hand?
No, right. Can you see the cursor?
Oh, now I can, yeah.
There is part of it, there's part of it, there's part of it, and there's part of it before it goes into the city, uh, and that, that end. Um, so, uh, one of the things we'll need to do is, 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 is talk to the consultant who did the stormwater ordinance.
Yep.
And kind of sync up what we have in mind for river corridors and what's already on the books for stormwater since this will affect some of the Moon Brook watershed there.
Is that the only segment, that small section up there?
And it crosses Town Line Road.
It goes into Mendon.
Yes.
So we're talking about a very small number of horses.
And, and that's.
Half a mile.
Half a mile, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. And, and that's true with our stormwater ordinance. It, it doesn't really affect that large of an area.
Right.
So, okay, so we got those two possibilities for maybe, um, doing some, we, we, we'll want to reach out to everyone that lives in these areas that have pink.
Right.
But.
Difference is the river corridor reach than the stormwater ordinance reach.
Well, it, it's, you know, you've got these pink areas. So if we go down to.
I don't mean in terms of, well, I guess there are two things. Um, one is how much does it expand on our stormwater existing stormwater ordinance, if at all. And secondly, substantively, what is it, is going to be the difference between the two?
Okay. So, so that, that, that's probably a future discussion, Norm. We're not, we're not in the nuts and bolts of the language.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going with it without getting into the detail. I mean, how much? Do the purpose, are the purposes of the two consistent? Or are there different regulatory purposes?
They, they are not identical.
Right.
Okay. I, I think that's the best way of saying that. And you can, and the, um, the, the river corridors probably include a little bit more of the Moon Brook watershed. And there would be, um, there would be, uh, there could very well be stricter restrictions on any kind of development or buildings or where those go. So I, I, I think that's best for a future discussion.
Okay.
Um, it's going to be a little bit tricky marrying the two.
I had asked the question about what the overlap was, and it's not, it's not necessarily, I thought it was just an expansion of what we had already done, but Kyle last time said that it's, it's not exactly, um, a, a mapping and extension. There's slightly, we had the one bend and I asked him about that and he said, there, there's an overlap and there's some, there's some disparity between the two ordinances, but I mean, there's a, there's a large segment that's the same. But then there is some covered in, in this that are not covered in the other one and vice versa, is what I gathered from my question last time he was here.
And you can see down here and where the Otter Creek comes through the southern part of Rutland town.
Yep.
Um, the, again, the darker color is the floodway. So that. Um, the again, the darker color is the floodway, so that's already under some regulation. Um, it, the the river quarters and the pink.
Yep.
So it adds a little bit there.
And.
Not much.
The upper left is, is that center Rutland? Is that where we are?
Where I'm headed?
Yeah, yeah, right, right there. Yeah.
Yeah, so uh the pocket park is like.
Right in there.
It's, see, this is the, where's the town line? I think the town line is right here.
Got it right there.
Uh, so the pocket park, we write in here.
Right, that's what I thought. The other side, yeah.
So so there's some river corridor here upstream of the falls. Um, and then um this is still in the town, right, Bill? I'm trying to.
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right, right, right. So and then there's, you know, there's homes and businesses here that would be affected, but again, the dark is already semi-regulated. That's the floodway.
Yep.
It's just the pink that would be new. So um, just kind of a wider shot.
So what we did when we had the um um, was the stormwater ordinance, we went and uh mapped all of the parcels that were touched by um the area that uh was covered and then we sent out flyers or. Yeah, it was a buffer zone, right? And I mean, I I would just suggest we take a similar type of approach.
Well, yeah, we 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 could. Um, these regulations, um, i- if if we're gonna pass state muster and and get the extra relief during disasters.
Yep.
Um, there's going to be more restrictions than there are in the
For what?
Stormwater ordinance.
Right, in the stormwater.
Yeah.
I understand that, but the the approach that we took to notify people and to hold a public hearing I think was a solid approach. I'm just asking if that's the way we should proceed.
Yeah, and 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 I'm saying that um what has worked in other towns, because this is more regulatory, the river corridors, a a more direct approach has worked where uh letters are sent directly to the landowners.
Isn't that what I was saying? No.
Um, I don't think, I think we s- we put things on the website and we advertised it. I don't think we sent letters.
Uh, we.
We said, yes, we did. We said, because I was, I worked on the mailing.
The people that have, that were in the fifty foot.
Yep.
They had that fifty foot designation.
People, okay.
They got directly sent letters.
Right.
Okay.
So I I was just suggesting to do something.
Yeah, so so that would, yeah, I think that would work well.
Okay.
And then on on top of that, I'm thinking maybe some inviting those same people and maybe a a larger audience to walk some of these areas and and see what a river corridor looks like on the ground, why it might be necessary. I mean, here we see who it's going to affect this kind of map. But maybe um a a site visit, walking the area, you could see, oh, that's where the erosion could occur and, you know, and just make problems.
Site visits always are helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a big fan of them too.
So we can set site visits for our schedule because it's gonna be lighter earlier as we get further into the spring and we could have part of our meeting or entire meeting uh there and then just invite the neighbors to join us at a specific point and specific time.
Yeah. Yeah, so when is it, when is that time gonna be this year, do you think?
Anything, anytime after um March twenty-first, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, if you take four sections, uh northeast, southwest, we could we could do it in four meetings. Depends on when you want to get it done, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, he.
Or you just want to do one.
Yeah, I was thinking of like one evening or something like that and hit a couple areas so that the people we we grab are, we're gonna keep instead of having multiple meetings and they start dropping off. And I think Kyle can help us a lot with what we say, what 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 the message is out there and on the ground.
Where are the greatest number of um affected property owners?
Well, I think, you know, um over in over here, this part of town.
Where are you with your cursor?
Um, well, in center Rutland, I think this area, there's, there's quite a few. I mean, there's some businesses that's and that always makes it a little more complicated. And I think um East Creek, which is, you know, from one, from the northeastern corner.
Yep.
All the way down this way.
Is that something we could do in a single meeting?
We're not walking the whole corridor. What what I'd have Kyle help us do is like pick an area along East Creek or Otter Creek.
Right.
And show us the, you know, how a river quarter would actually, you know, help with the flooding there.
You know, a good spot to do that would be by the polo field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could all park there.
Yep.
You can all walk out. It's an easy accessibility to the river. And it would be easy for him to say, this is.
Yep.
This is the the next.
So we could invite anybody from all over town that would be.
Yeah, and there's plenty of parking there, so we could.
Yep, that's a great idea.
When there's not a soccer game.
Where is the polo field?
Polo field's over by um.
East Park, no, he's.
Below Hathaway's Farm.
That's the way it's, Hathaway's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the soccer field, yeah.
Yeah.
Right across from here.
Did they ever play polo there?
I know where it is. They used to.
Who did?
Oh, I I seem to remember.
Before Hathways.
Yeah, that would, that would be an excellent place. And, you know, maybe um like starting at our fire station over here and um.
Fire station's another spot that would work.
Yeah.
I mean, you're really not gonna be able to walk too close, I mean, in a lot of cases.
Yeah.
Unless you get it pretty darn early before things start to happen in a hurry in spring in Vermont, but.
Yeah.
Hey, guys, can I?
Yeah. Jump on in.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm having bad internet issues. I just wanted to let you know, cause I went out, went back in, but now I'm having trouble hearing, so I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's. So, yeah, basically, Mary Beth, we're just talking about, this is something we'll be doing over the next few months.
Yeah.
Um. Reaching out to the landowners and and hopefully doing some site visits with Kyle Madash.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. Okay, I think, so we'll um.
Why don't you find out what his availability is and then?
Yeah, I've been trying, yeah.
Yeah, and and then set it, because if you want him there to walk with us, then we can't do anything until we know when he's available. And then just, I thought, pick uh a date in maybe May.
Right.
Or June.
But there's some things we could work on ahead of time, like the letter and.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Um, and and um I'll probably, Bill, um you uh work with Andres on what his thoughts are, so there might be some charges coming down for that. And just start the conversation with him and like, how how are we going to marry the stormwater ordinance? And I'm sure he's familiar with river corridor regulations. Okay, great, we'll expect to hear much more about that um coming up.
Sounds good.
Anyone have any announcements? Okay, let's look at the minutes for the sixteenth.
Motion to approve the minutes of February sixteenth.
Oh, excuse me. Um, can we go back to announcements? Because um we've got four members. We we need to take care of a a little um, a little bit of business is um in announcements, um but I think it's appropriate. Uh, we've got four members who whose terms are running out right now. And um they are Sherman, Howard, Andy, and Jerry. So um Bill and I are thinking of going to the select board next Tuesday um and letting them know whether we've got any openings or if we're all set, everyone's gonna remain in place. So again, Sherman, Howard, Andy, and Jerry.
Andy left and.
He did, but he was saying he's gonna be at the next meeting, so I think he's ending on staying.
Stay, yeah.
I haven't heard otherwise from him, so, yeah. So um Sherman, you want to stay on? I guess I'll just.
Yes.
Okay, and Jerry?
Yes.
Great, Howard?
Sure.
Okay. All right. That makes that really easy. Now, now we can get to the minutes. Sorry, Dana.
That's okay. Uh, so I make a a motion to accept the minutes from uh February sixteenth.
Oh, second.
Okay. You got new business number two, Bill? Giving you a hard time. No, it's the, it's the animal thing in permit trash.
The draft words on it, it's okay.
Norm, you got anything for the the minutes?
Somehow I don't have them. Um.
They were great.
There you go.
I'm going to not offer any comments tonight. And I hope the shock doesn't set in.
Well, excuse you.
Somehow I didn't put it in here with everything else.
Okay, well, we've got a a motion and a second. All of those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Another unanimous, okay.
Mary Beth, did you say something?
You did.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay, anything else? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay.
Thanks.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.